Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the May 13th Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 6:31 PM. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meeting, so both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And Councilmember Martz has an excused absence this evening. So for public comment, there are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. So, we're going to start with public comment. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you're going to press star three. If you're on a computer or smartphone, you can look for the hand icon or send the host a chat message. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So I'm going to wait a moment, see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. And in the meantime, I'll ask the clerk if anyone has signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening.
No one has signed up. We don't have any members of the public in the room, but we do have one attending virtually. However, I don't see they're indicating a desire to speak at this time.
Okay. Well, as a reminder, written comments can always be submitted to us at any time by emailing citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. And so, moving on to the rest of our agenda item, we have two items on the agenda tonight, and we're going to start with Comp 0027, Facilities Next Steps and Revenue Options for Fire Station 71 and Bonds, presented by Andrea Snyder, our interim's Chief Financial Officer. And Autumn, is Autumn online? Fantastic. Okay, I'll let you guys take it away.
Thank you, Council President. Autumn Monahan is joining us from home virtually and is available for questions. But also, we have a few other presenters joining us this evening. We have Fire Chief Ben Lane from Eastside Fire and Rescue, Sarah Ellie from TCA Architects, as well as Maggie Marshall from PFM Financial Advisors, who's our, the city's bond advisors. They all have a piece of the presentation today. The purpose of tonight is, we're really here not seeking any specific direction tonight. We're really here to follow up on the information requests from City Council at the previous Committee of the Whole Meeting on April 29. So we wanted to follow up with you and provide some of the information you requested. It's not all of the information you requested. We have some subsequent meetings that will get to the rest of it. So we wanted to focus tonight mostly on the fire station. We had quite a few questions last time, wanting more information about response times, as well as comparing different sites and the fit of the station on each site. So we have Chief Lane, as well as Sarah Ellie, to talk about those items. We also had requests for additional financing information, wanting to learn a little bit more about the Levy lid lifts in Bellevue and Mercer Island to fund their fire facilities. So we'll be providing more information on that, as well as the Issaquah bond financing over time. But again, no specific direction that we're seeking tonight. It's really to ensure that you have the information that you need. So with that, I would just like to invite Chief Lane from Eastside Fire and Rescue to talk about their response times and modeling.
Get my notes here real quick. Nice to see everybody. Ben Lane, Fire Chief, Eastside Fire and Rescue, happy to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our modeling procedure and with the data that we use to help tell the story here. So, the slide that you're seeing today up on the screen is Eastside Fire and Rescue's current service area. Excuse me. And it's important to know that the modeling that we use is a computer-based software, Code 3. It takes into consideration all of the station locations, so not just the three City of Issaquah stations that we'll be discussing tonight. This is a map from your comp plan. I felt it was important to show the map, so the area highlighted in red is the central Issaquah area. And this is the area where the greatest potential of growth exists due to the city's current zoning standards. I know Deputy Council President DeMichele asked some questions around future modeling, so this is taken into consideration in that modeling. Here are your current fire station locations and the neighborhoods associated with them. Our primary discussion will be about, at the station there at the south end of the service area, the Old Town Fire Station. The station icons in yellow are the three locations that we'll be discussing tonight. The northernmost location, I believe it's the, this is the location that has been the predominant, predominant topic of conversation with council in the past. And so, that site is going to be addressed, the current station location, which we're calling Old Town, Station 71. And then from a data perspective, is the best data location. So it's important to note that we don't have a property highlighted here, but this is just where the Code 3 modeling points to the best location. You might ask why the shift from the Eastlake site. This has been a longstanding conversation for many, many, many years. There's, there were several different factors that played into that. One at the time was the partnership health within Eastside Fire and Rescue, and this was an effort to try to address some of the concerns that Samamish had at the time, in partnership with the City of Issaquah. Given, I think what's been shared in the past, the ongoing challenges with that site, the potential site swap, me being the new fire chief, I think it's always important to have a new, fresh set of eyes and a different perspective. So, talking to Andrea Snyder on the topic, saying, "Well, let's use data to point where maybe the best location is," so we've, we've made a shift. The health of Eastside Fire and Rescue is stronger than ever, so some of those concerns that we were maybe trying to address several years ago are no longer in existence. So, the fundamental shift to using data to help the city plan for the best location. And not to mention, the city, your three fire stations, in comparison to your partner city, Samamish, are probably three times busier, so I think a station location is very important. So here, this is the Code 3 data, and this captures these four different locations, or four different areas of the data, considers the first arriving unit on scene. There was a question earlier, could we have the Y-axis start at zero, a zero-minute timeframe? The reason why we're not modeling data that way, because this is an average of the first unit arriving on scene. So this is across nearly 19,000 calls over four and a half years. The data is actual historic response data, modeled under the, again, the Code 3 computer-aided modeling we utilize. It knows the station locations, it knows the apparatus assigned to the locations, it knows the number of personnel assigned to the apparatus. It takes into account our run cards. Run cards are a predetermined number of resources and personnel that are needed to address this, to address a specific call. So the Code 3 modeling also takes into account that. It takes into account simultaneous calls, and so across that four-and-a-half-year timeframe, nearly 19,000 calls, these first-arriving data points are taking into account all of the, that data collection. So the Old Town site, her first-arriving unit, on average, it's about a five-minute timeframe. The Fronton Gilman location, across all responses, is 5.1. Point one is roughly six seconds, and this is using tenths. And then the Eastlake site, compared to the Old Town, you're looking at about 35-second difference for the Eastlake location. The last-arriving unit, as I shared, the Code 3 modeling accounts for all units responding to a call. So I use, for an example, the structured fire. The data knows, or the Code 3 modeling knows on our run cards, we need four engines to arrive on scene. So it would account for four engines to actually arrive on scene. It takes into consideration the posted speed limit and historical travel time to factor in that data. So we're saying that the average last unit to arrive on scene for those multiple incident responses, that's where that data comes from. And then we get a little bit more granular, we break it into EMS and fire. Roughly, in Issaquah, you're just shy of 80% of your responses are EMS-related. So the Old Town site is just right about the five-minute mark across the entire service area. Again, I believe there was a question, does this take into consideration the Providence Point, the Samamish stations? And the answer is yes. Takes into consideration all of Eastside Fire and Rescue stations, to include our mutual aid partners, Bellevue, for example. Station 8 runs a fair amount into South Cove, so that is factored into this coverage. So as you can see, the Eastlake site, again, is third in the overall rating. The Fronton Gilman location, we're utilizing that because that's the best data perspective, and it gives you a comparison to the site that we're predominantly discussing, which is the Old Town site.
Chief Lane, we've got a question before you move on.
Sure. Should I back up?
Thank you so much. Could you just explain, we don't, we don't have a station on Fronton Gilman, do we?
You do not.
So was this site selected as sort of a in-the-middle point, or how was that decided to measure from there? And, and how did you get those numbers then?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, we used the Code 3 modeling software to say, where is the best location, given all the data that's been inputted and our run cards? Where would be the best location to place a station? Was it, we worked, we reverse engineered it. We used the data, the response times, our run cards, to have the software say, "This is where the location's at." So that's how we got up, we came up with the, the Fronton Gilman location.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome. One more thing to note before I move on, is that in the, in the overall data, we looked closely, so that first slide in the comp planning, that red area was central Issaquah. We also ran three separate models, looking at the closest neighborhoods, so central Issaquah, Old Town, and the Issaquah Valley neighborhoods. All three of those models still had the Old Town Issaquah Fire Station site outperform the Eastlake site. This is that same data, utilizing a heat map. This heat map is one minute to six minutes. It's important to note that just because it shows red does not mean that they're being underserved. Our standard of cover for an urban response area for EMS calls, we strive to hit first unit on scene 90% of the time within six minutes and 30 seconds. So even something where we would be meeting the benchmark, it would be identified as red in here. So on the, I think it's, on my left, the model where it shows performing outside, that's utilizing the Eastlake location. You can see the stark contrast between that and the Old Town site, the current Station 71 site. There was an awful lot of orange and red in the core. That core area, again, going back to the comp plan map, is where the city stands to have its largest growth, based off of your current code standards. The next one, there is very little change. You can see on the left side there, that's the Fronton Gilman location. Again, that's the reverse engineering of the best data perspective compared to the current Station 71 site. I will stop there. I also, happy to answer questions, but I do want to take a moment to be proactive and answer some of the questions that were submitted when, after this packet was published. So using, starting at the top, the secured parking, there was a question around, is this a standard? And what's being proposed is a gated secured parking behind the fire station. Currently, in Eastside Fire and Rescue service area, we have three facilities that have secured parking, Station 31 in North Bend, or, actually, Station 31 in Woodinville, a Station 72 here in Issaquah, and Station 87 in North Bend. I would say that it's, although not a standard, it is a preferred security measure. Fire stations, to date, have experienced several either break-in attempts. We've actually lost equipment out of a, out of a station when a crew was not there. Same thing when crews are visiting. Grocery store, you might see on the news where there's been rescue tools stolen from Seattle Fire Department apparatus. So to us, security is very, very important. So although it's not a standard, it's a, it would be something that, from a future planning perspective, could be something we'd ask you to highly consider. The location, so the consideration of, given the fencing project that's going to happen behind the current 71, would it be feasible to have the crews utilize that parking space? Although that space would be secure, a couple of things to think about. I believe there's some projected growth, or planned growth, or at least the ability for growth for Issaquah PD. So those parking spaces would likely be utilized to support the growth of the police department. In addition, it's not uncommon for firefighters to report to duty with all of their uniform, their bunker gear and equipment. So packing that, you know, a block and a half or two blocks, even on a nice sunny day, can be a challenge, but certainly during adverse weather or late evening hours. So I think that in itself could, could be a safety factor that would, would be a risk to the reporting crews. Yes, sure.
I know that there's some questions about the parking lot that was depicted in, in previous slides and presentations, using some of the property directly south of this building for a potential parking lot. And I just also wanted to say that what these, this really is, is a fit test. So you're going to see a few more of those diagrams with Sarah's presentation. It's not a concept, really. It's not a site plan, certainly. It's really just looking at what, how can we use the property we have to fulfill the fire station needs that we've identified thus far? And what fits? And so, I know that there's some questions around the parking lot, what suitability that would have, or how parking would be used. But I just want to say, this is, this is all just really, all the work we've done so far is to determine, could a facility fit on some of the properties that we currently own, and how would that, how would that service the city?
We received a few other, other fire station questions. I know that TCA, the architect's going to talk about the remodel footprint. And there was a question regarding Samamish. They're currently going through a robust remodel at their north-end fire station, Station 82. How was Samamish able to relocate those resources during the construction project? Samamish has a bit of a different deployment model than the City of Issaquah. On the north and south end of the city, they have a fire station with, with an engine in each one of those facilities. And centrally located at Pine Lake, there's an aid unit, and that aid unit has, has two personnel assigned to it. So what we were able to do, given that unique configuration, the fire engine at Station 82, which is currently under construction, has been temporarily relocated to the Pine Lake location, because that facility can secure and house not only the personnel, but the apparatus. And then we've taken the two-person aid crew, and we've rented an apartment on the north end of Samamish, as close to the, the current Station 82's location, to try to address our standard of cover. As I mentioned prior, Samamish is very similar. Nearly 80% of their calls are EMS. So having that aid unit housed at an apartment complex covers a service area for about 80% of our calls. And we plan to do the same thing when they remodel their fire station at the south end. That's roughly $3,000 a month with rent, parking, utilities, and Comcast cable. Now, looking at the Station 71 deployment model, there are five people assigned there. We have a tiller, ladder truck, a rescue rig, and an aid unit. I'm not sure there's an apartment complex nearby where we could, we could house all those, those, not only the equipment, I can imagine the parking would be quite expensive, but the personnel as well. For questions, I think I addressed the response times. So with that, if there's any other questions? Not going very far, I can't, so... Yeah, or very fast.
Thank you, Chief Lane. Next up, we have Sarah Ellie, the Principal at TCA, TCA Architecture, who has a lot of experience in designing fire stations across the region. So thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me today. Today, I'll go over kind of some points on the existing station, and then two different test of fits that we've done. So the existing station, a few, just a few pointers on it. So the existing bay width and size do not meet the current WAC standards. So for, the WAC standards require the apparatus doors to be open and to have a three-foot clearance around to walk around the truck. And the existing bays, the widths don't fit that. The bay height is limited. I think there's only one bay that fits the ladder truck. So the height of the existing bays are pretty limited. It would require a substantial renovation, and so what that really means is full seismic upgrades, full mechanical upgrades, full electrical upgrades. And some things that we're seeing with these systems are with the new code. We're not, we're not seeing very, enough room for the new mechanical, electrical upgrades that are required by the new code. The station footprint, the existing station footprint, doesn't accommodate hot zones and cross-contamination best practices. So there's a lot of new best practices in keeping the firefighter safe, keeping dirty areas away from their clean areas, so they're not getting, say, their food contaminated with exhaust. And so, being able to fit that in the footprint of the existing station, it doesn't, it doesn't fit. There's previous concerns about water-related issues that haven't been addressed, and then the building envelope and the roof structure are not designed to the new energy codes. I think this station was built in 1970, so its energy code is very dated. So here are the two sites. So, on the north east, you see the existing Old Town Fire Station, and the lot is about 16,700 square feet. And then the City Hall site, where we are today, is a combined lot with the back park, that back lot is 20, over 20,000 square feet, and that doesn't include the square footage of the alley. So some pros and cons of using the existing site. So it's a known location in the target response area, and it's a permitted use. Some of the cons are the temporary facility requirement. Temporary facilities cost a lot of money. We're not often as lucky as Samamish was. And so, building a temp facility is really difficult and can be very expensive. Minimum apron depth, it is close to the intersection, which can cause conflict with responses. The parking in the egress is on an adjacent property, so it's not on the exact, the same property that the building would be. And then there would be, for during construction, there's no lay-down area since the site's so small, so it would impact the park and the surrounding properties during construction. So then, 135 Sunset Way, or City Hall South, we're looking at a few pros and cons. So, the existing station could remain operational during construction, so there would be no temporary station required. It's in with the, it's within the target response areas we saw earlier from the chief. It can accommodate the drive-through bays, and we can fit the apparatus lengths. It's a permitted use. It combines, we combined, it's a larger site than the existing site. And then we talked about secure crew parking. And then the cons is a minimal apron depth, that's typical for all these sites. And then, the future use of the existing station would need to be considered. So then, and like Andrea said, this is just a quick test of fit, to see if we can fit the program on this site. We developed this program a few years, years ago with the Eastside Fire and the City of Issaquah. And so we've been using this program to test different sites as they've come, come, come up. And so this site, we're showing four bays, two drive-through and two back-ins. You can see that the drive-through comes off of the back alley, and then you can, and responds off the east side, or Sunset Way, sorry. We're showing square footage to accommodate nine sleeping rooms. The apron size is very similar to what we did, what was done at Station 72. And to fit this, it would be a three-story building. And so the building area we're calculating is about 90, 19,000 square feet, and that includes, that's the gross area. And it includes the program that we discussed earlier. Let's see. And then I think there's a question, let me go back to this site plan. There's a question about extending the draw, or extending the existing aprons to accommodate the length of the new engines. And so, to accommodate, there's a couple of things, is both the length and the doors that are now standard for east side would, so we're looking at extending that out, probably about 10 feet. And then it would be really difficult to get into that back area of the, to drive through those bays. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, go ahead. We'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. On the cons, on the 190 East Sunset Way, it says, "Close to intersection, traffic conflict with response." I'm wondering if we have modeling or other ways of knowing about how improved the proposed location is? It's very similar in location, it's also on the same street. So I'm just wondering, how do we know that that would improve the, or reduce the likelihood of traffic collision?
So if you can see, at the intersection, right in front of the bay for the existing, there's an area for, to back up. It's a little bit less likely on that south side, but I don't think we have any modeling for that.
We don't have any modeling specific, other than just our historic practices of backing the ladder truck into that bay space. So we're right near an intersection where cars are turning, at least with this proposed site across the street, we're further back, which gives a little bit more reaction time. And then, the other benefit is that we would very unlikely be backing into this station, because we would be able to drive through. So we would be eliminating the traffic hazard that we are creating today by backing the ladder truck into the fire station.
Okay, going down, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I have two quick questions. So, but there would two, there would still be two back-end bays with the new facility, is that correct?
Yes.
In addition to the two drive-through?
That's what we're showing on this test of A, correct?
So is that common amongst stations in our service area to have back-end bays? How inconvenient is that?
Yeah, our preferred bay configuration is a drive-through bay, but there are also many cases where we have drive-through bays, and we end up backing in anyway, because we store a reserve apparatus behind that. So, in this configuration here, those, those back-end bays would be likely allocated for an aid unit or a battalion chief unit, so a much smaller apparatus that would be able to very quickly and efficiently back into those spaces.
Oh, okay. You know, I hadn't thought about that, that's a point, okay. And then for the existing site, when we talk about substantial renovation, we're talking about, I mean, given all of that, given the scope of that, that really means a full tear-down and redevelopment, is that right?
Basically, maybe not a full tear-down, but you're going down to the structure and you're reinforcing the structure, likely going to the footings for seismic stuff, so you have to tie it all the way down, so there'll be some footing work, and definitely going all the way to the structure.
Okay.
And then mechanical, electrical will all get torn out and replaced. Yep.
Thanks.
Deputy Council President.
So when I'm looking at this fit to the lot... So, when I'm looking at this fit-to-the-lot concept, can you just tell me, we've got this lovely walkway out here that connects downtown to the Rainier Trail, et cetera. How much of that is going to be gone if we use this concept?
That's a good question. So, this is a quick test of it. We would do our very best to keep as much as possible. The yellow area you see right on the corner, that's, the intent is to put the very public area right kind of there, so it has a presence, and then it kind of can tie into that park And so, we would take a deeper look at it.
I realize we're still in the concept area.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the next part? Oh, one more, one more.
Sorry. So, on this, I'm just thinking over and over how we can mitigate the impact on traffic and the congestion that's on Sunset already. Is there any, I'm just putting this out there, is there any way that we could turn the building around so that the trucks, the fire trucks go out a different way? Or could we expand that alleyway out there to accommodate? I'm just thinking, is there a way that the fire trucks maybe just don't come out on Sunset? They come out somewhere else. You've already thought of it. All right.
I would just add to that. Again, from our deployment model, being closer to an arterial, which the Sunset Way is, it's quick access to I-90 or Upfront Street. So, by flipping it around, there would likely be, you know, a several-second impact, maybe up to 15 to 20-second impact on going out of the station and having to either make two rights or two lefts to get back onto that arterial.
Okay. I think we can move on to the next segment. So, moving on from the fire station, there were some questions from last time about bonding and financing. Just as a reminder of the things that the administration had proposed at the April 29th meeting, thought I'd go over quickly what the proposals were, so we can compare numbers as we look at Bellevue and Mercer Island, et cetera. So, as a reminder, capital costs that we've estimated, these are rough order-of-magnitude estimates. We do anticipate the construction of fire station, of a new fire station, to be $32 million. Police renovation, that includes seismic retrofits, et cetera, for the police station would be $15 million, for a total of $47 million. We also, as a reminder, discuss the possibility of leasing for the City Hall offices and municipal court. Tenant improvements, we estimate at $4 million, and rent, we've estimated to be about $1 million a year, just to keep those numbers in mind as we compare across other cities and other bonds that the city has done in the past. So, again, as a reminder, how we would fund these capital facilities for the fire station and for IPD renovations, looking at about $3 million of debt service annually. If we were to do a property tax imposed upon Issaquah, it would be about $206 for the average home value of $1.1 million. So, that levy rate would increase from what it is today, is .74, that's 74 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, to 92 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. So, just keeping those numbers in mind as we move forward and talk about examples from other cities. So, let's talk about Mercer Island. They did a levy lid lift in 2012. That was for $5.2 million, and they paid that debt off in nine years. So, we talked last time about how levy lid lifts can only be used for debt service per state law for nine years. And for $5.2 million, they could cover that in nine years. How is their fire station only $5.2 million when we're estimating $32 million just 12 years later? Well, there, it was 12 years ago, so costs have changed. Their fire station was 8,000 square feet versus the 19,000 square feet that we're proposing for Fire Station 71. So, it was significantly smaller. I also believe the build is a little different. We have a history of building for lead platinum in Issaquah. Not every city does that. We also try to make sure that our fire stations are built very quality so that they can withstand things like earthquakes and other emergencies, so our first responders can be there for us when we need them. So, those are some of the differences in costs, including, of course, it's been 12 years, and costs have escalated since then. Also, Bellevue fires. So, in 2016, Bellevue did a very large levy lid lift for a number of their fire facility needs. It was a 20-year lid lift. Their rate increased from .125 dollars, so 12 and 1/2 cents of, per $1,000 assessed value, to a full $1.25 per assessed value. So, it was a big increase. That covered seismic upgrades for various stations, a new downtown fire station, upgrades to existing fire stations, as well as warehouse space for logistics center. And one important thing to note from the language with this levy lid lift is there was language that said, "The Bellevue City Council may allocate funding among these categories and may revise these categories." And so, that gave the Bellevue City Council a lot of flexibility within that levy lid lift to pretty much move around and reallocate money. And as we've looked into this a little further, it seems as though they used some of this money from the levy lid lift and also general fund dollars to help pay down their debt service. Their debt service was not paid down within nine years, so that means they shifted some of the funds from the general fund to be able to pay back their bonds. So, that's how Bellevue was able to do this. Any questions so far about these examples? Okay. Great. Given that, then, I would like to welcome Maggie Marshall, who's with us from PFM Financial Advisors, to talk more about bonds, our bond history over time, and show you those comparisons.
Thank you for having me. Again, Maggie Marshall, I'm with PFM Financial Advisors. We are the city's financial advisor, municipal advisor, so most of what we work on is related to debt and borrowing for capital projects like this. I'm going to try my best to keep it pretty high level here and not get too into the weeds. I know there are some questions that might push me that way, but I will do my best. So, just to give you sort of a brief overview of different types of general obligation debt, it's essentially divided into two categories, voted or not voted. Unlimited tax general obligation bonds are voted. They're payable from a new excess property tax. They're called unlimited because the levy is set to whatever it takes to pay debt service on those bonds. It can go up or down, or whatever it is needed to get that amount of debt service to pay on the amount borrowed. It requires a 60% yes vote of the electorate and consumes, you know, there's, I'll get into debt capacity in a little bit here, but it consumes, or debt capacity, which is limited to 2 and 1/2% of assessed value of the city. The other category, non-voted general obligation debt, sometimes called council manic debt or limited tax general obligation debt, these are not voted. They can be paid from regular property tax or other, what they call legally available funds. So, that could be a variety of things. It could be a voted sales tax. It's still considered a non-voted bond because it doesn't have that specific property tax excess levy. It can be paid from real estate excise taxes or a combination of a variety of things. It does require approval by city council, but again, no vote of the electorate. All right. The debt capacity is the next topic here. A variety of different ways you can look at debt capacity. When we talk about legal debt capacity, it's based on a percentage of the city's assessed value. And I want to address, there was a question in here, why is the $16.87 billion number different on the bottom half of the page? That's a typo. It's 16.87. The rest of the numbers on that page are still accurate. So, non-voted, council manic, limited tax, whatever we want to call it, the non-voted debt is limited to 1 and 1/2% of the assessed value of the city. So, that shakes out to roughly $240 million. Now, whether or not the city can actually afford to pay debt service on that amount of debt is a totally different story. These are legal. It's the same for all cities across Washington, 1 and 1/2% of AV for non-voted debt and 2 and 1/2% of assessed value for voted and non-voted added together. So, in the city's case, that's over $400 million in debt. But again, that's looking at it through the perspective of legal debt capacity and not necessarily affordability or what you can take on based on the cash flows. Oh, there we go. Okay. So, there are some questions about what does the city have outstanding now? What has it looked like in the past? Here's where I'm going to try not to get too far into the weeds of details, but this chart you see on the bottom is showing debt service, so annual payments on outstanding limited tax general obligation debt. The sort of shaded portion there is what was paid on the bonds in the past. So, if you go all the way back to 2016, roughly $2.2 million annually was paid on outstanding bonds at that time. Jump forward to 2024, and we're, you know, under $1 million. So, that amount has come down pretty significantly over the past eight years. There was a question about why does the amount increase from 2028 to 2029? That is the effect of the city prepaying a portion of one of its outstanding series of bonds. So, those dark blue bars at the bottom of the chart, those are bonds issued in 2019 for the Bergsma Property Acquisition. In 2022, the city chose to use cash on hand to prepay, pay down a portion of that debt. I won't go into a ton of detail here, but essentially, the reason that they chose that debt is it had the highest interest rate. It also could be prepaid. That debt was placed with a commercial bank that allowed the debt to be prepaid at any time without any penalty. The 2020 bond, on the other hand, can't be prepaid until December of this year. I'm going to pause there and see if there are questions. Otherwise, I'm going to keep going. All right. Okay. So, this is sort of an expanded view of what we just were looking at, and I'm realizing now, looking at this page, that I think the chart got a little distorted when we put it into the full presentation. There was a question about what are the dotted lines, and they're a little bit off on this chart. The intention of the dotted lines was to show 2016, the annual debt service amount was, like I mentioned before, you know, 2.2, 2.3 million dollars. And then, when we get out to 2029, it'll be at $1.3 million. So, still significantly less than it was back in 2016, but it will be up slightly from where it is right now. And we can, I can follow up with a corrected version of that chart if it would be helpful. Moving to unlimited tax general obligation debt, so this is voted. These are voted GO bonds. City currently has three series outstanding. Similar concept to the previous slide on limited tax general obligation bonds. It's looking at what was paid in the past compared to what is being paid now, and what does that look like going forward into the future? Again, you see debt service sort of dropping off over time. There was a question about why does the debt service on the 2014 bonds go all the way out to 2033 when the 2017 bonds, which is the red blocks, gets paid off earlier, gets paid off in 2026? The reason for that is the bonds that were issued in 2017, we're refinancing bonds that were issued all the way back in 2005, 2006. So, generally, the city has issued its voted GO debt on a 20-year term basis. So, back in 2005, 2006, those bonds were 20-year bonds. And in 2014, also issued with a 20-year term, so those go out to 2033. Questions? Comments?
Okay. We finally got one. Councilmember Ray.
This is really easy and hard, but hard at the same time. What's the prevailing rate for municipal bonds right now?
That is a good question. It depends on the credit rating and the tax status. So, assuming you were to issue on a tax-exempt basis, the city has a very high credit rating. That credit rating, in theory, could be impacted if you took on a lot of more debt. Off the top of my head, I would estimate a 20-year financing to be somewhere hovering around 4%. That's off the top of my head.
No, no, and I'm not going to hold you to it. It was such a fat thumb number.
It's certainly higher than it was.
Particularly since I see some 2 percenters here on the current thing, and I thought that didn't seem very likely.
I would agree that that, rates are certainly up from where they were a couple of years ago.
And kudos to our finance team for deciding to refund those bonds and get that nice rate. Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Yeah, I was wondering that myself. What is our bond rating or credit rating, and who is it through? And explain that. And then, it looks like we've done a pretty conservative job in terms of taking on debt and paying it off in timely fashion. It looks like we have a pretty good history of doing that.
Yep. I believe the city is rated by S&amp;P and AAA. I don't know the last time that S&amp;P reviewed the city's rating. I think it's been a little while. The past few series of bonds that were issued were done with commercial banks, so they didn't require a rating. But if the city were to, you know, go and issue a significant amount of debt, that would likely be done through a public bond offering and require a rating from S&amp;P or from Moody's.
I'll ask a question. So, do we have any information about what are combined debt services for the LTGO and the UTGO? And kind of what it's been historically, maybe more years? Because I think I got a chart emailed to me that showed combined back to 2022, which was much higher. So, you know what that looks like.
Council President Walsh, we can provide that information as a follow-up to this meeting?
Fantastic. Yeah. As Deputy Council President DeMichele said, it looks like we're going down quite significantly. So, if we're just judging, you know, how much more that is from today's period versus maybe five or 10 years ago when we had more debt and adequately paid it down, I think that would be useful. So, any other questions on the financing portion before we go to kind of next steps and question, feedback? Nope? Okay. Turn it back over to Andrea.
So, next steps, we have, as I mentioned before, this is So, next steps, we have, as I mentioned before, this isn't the last time we're going to talk to you and provide information regarding our facility proposals. So we have, looking ahead June 10th, taking a tour of our existing facilities. We'll go to fire station 71, the police station, as well as tour this building and talk to some of the staff who work out of each of these facilities, so council can get a feel for how those facilities are functioning today. And then, we're also examining a potential date of July 15th for a tour of other fire, police, and court facilities. So you can see what modern facilities are that are more built to suit for the purposes that they house, and the differences between our existing facilities and other facilities that are, again, more built to suit and up to more modern standards than what we have today. July 16th, the very next day, we'll have a discussion about what council learned, follow-up on the remainder of the information that you requested at the April 29th meeting. And we'd also be seeking direction on capital financing and council's preferences for how we could proceed. July 27th, then, is the city council retreat. That's a discussion of council's priorities for the 2025 and 2026 budget. So, we anticipate this topic coming up because, of course, it's a lot of money that we're talking about and a lot of changes to our facilities. And so we wanted to have a series of conversations and provide a lot of information to best prepare council for that retreat meeting and those discussions. As we zoom out, next steps overall, and looking at our facility needs and how we can meet those needs, we would, if we get direction from council, we would like to engage in community engagement, probably via a task force in fall of 2024. That task force would help inform on what that public engagement process should look like. What information should we be providing the public? And how should we be providing it moving forward? We would also look to move municipal court in late 2024, early 2025. We believe that we can work out a lease arrangement, should council provide us the direction to do so, with the King County District Court. And we have an interest in moving that court facility as soon as possible because of all the deficiencies we've mentioned. And we'll talk about that a lot more in the next tour. Then, potentially, again, if council approves this, we would look at putting the bond on the ballot at some time in 2025. We need to have a lot more discussions about when that could be. I know that there's an interest in assessing the Issaquah taxpayer support for such an initiative. So we would need to prepare for that for 2025. Then we'd look at moving city hall offices also in 2025, trying to secure a lease as we've proposed, and so that we can make way for the needed renovations to the police station and make room for them, because they do have significant needs for a facility and space. And so we'd move forward those renovations likely in 2026. So that's kind of a zoom out, pending council direction, of course. And at this point, I welcome any questions that you have.
I'm just going to start with one question because it relates to those next steps. Approximately when, if we approved the idea of going forward with a bond, would we be looking at a build of a fire station?
Yes, thank you. That's not on here, and it should be. The fire station, we would need to still do some community engagement on design. There's a lot more that we would need to do to finalize those plans. So, pending council direction, we would get that started in 2025, and then look at, you know, permitting, et cetera, once we've finalized the design, done some community engagement to help inform that design. The construction would, could begin once the court moves. Perhaps that's 2026, after we secure permits, et cetera.
Thank you, everyone, for letting me just add in my little question there. I know I always go last. Okay. So at this point, we're basically asking questions, and then we'll get to feedback after. I'll leave a moment there for public comment in case we have any. So, starting with questions, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Would it be possible to get an estimate, it could be a ballpark estimate, but a cost estimate for the option of redoing or renovating the existing fire station?
Yes, we could do that. We're not prepared with that information today, but we can, we can provide that for council at a future date.
Okay. I think that would be important to know in terms of the pros and cons, because right now, it doesn't have that in both. Thanks.
Councilmember Ray.
I don't know if this is a fair question, but I'm asking anyway. What's our fallback plan? Since we're kind of rolling the dice, not rolling the dice, but there's some uncertainty around a bond. And we've outlined a lot of significant problems with both the police station and fire station. What's the thinking around a fallback if that shouldn't happen?
Well, I think as you've seen, Councilmember Ray, members of the council, good evening. We have a lot of debt capacity. So it's just a matter of the ability to pay. So, if the voters chose that this was not made sense, we would look at creating capacity for council manic debt. And in order to do that, would require significant reductions to ongoing operation.
Thanks. That was an option I didn't think you, didn't think of. Okay.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Deputy Minister Ray Snyder, in the emails that went around last day or so, we talked about the fact that because we own this property, it lowers the cost of moving the fire station here. Would you be able to give us an estimate of, perhaps if we did acquire, did want to acquire a piece of property, given the size, dimensions, and the capacity that we need, could we get an estimate of how much more that would bump up the cost of a fire station?
Yes. I mean, quick estimate might be another 10 to 12 million in costs. Of course, it depends on the property, the size of the property, and how our negotiations could go with the seller. Of course, there are no properties within the immediate vicinity of Front and Gilman that are currently for sale. And so we would need to consider what those costs would be as we would try to negotiate something.
And that was going to be my next question, that given the information that was given to us by Chief Lane in terms of when the best response times happen and positioning of stations, basically, it comes down to, in that area that we'd want to situate or locate a station, we're not necessarily seeing any properties that would be open for us to take on and develop.
That's mostly accurate. We are aware that Liberty Park Office Park is for sale. It's at the end of Gilman there. It's somewhat within that vicinity. It's a lot larger than what we would need for just a fire station, and it's a pretty expensive property. And so given that, and those costs, the additional costs, we, the administration's not recommending that option at this time because we don't see a significant return or benefit to the response times for that added expense.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I continue down this lane of unfair questions and potential locations. This building that we are currently in used to be a fire station. Would it be at all possible to use it as a temporary location and tear down across the street and rebuild there?
I think that we would need to look into that a little bit more. It would still require an extensive amount of renovations to operate the apparatus out of this building. And I think that we would be facing the same safety concerns, or perhaps more safety concerns, that were cited earlier when it comes to exhaust and mixing with other spaces. So I think, I think that might be more expensive in the end, but we would need to, we would need to look into that to set up a temporary facility here.
Yeah, that was more of just an unfair question of, you know, it does have a history there, but. Councilmember Hall.
Thanks. Two quick ones. I just want to say I agree with Deputy Council President DeMichele that the space out here is a really great connector. But I'm actually just curious, I mean, parking space out here is all right-of-way, city right-of-way, right? We could, I mean, we haven't anticipated this, we're not posing this, but it could be used in the event we needed more space. Is that correct?
We would need to go through a process of vacating some of the right-of-way to turn it into real property to be developed, but we would have that flexibility. And I think, you know, an important part of this is that there's a lot more community engagement, public engagement, that we'd want to do around a fire station to, as we finalize the design, and how that site would fit within the greater context of the neighborhood. So there's, there is a lot more work that we need to do.
Definitely. But it is a path that would be available to us if we wanted to. A difficult path, but a path if we wanted to.
Yes.
Okay. And then, second question doesn't need to be answered tonight, it's just because I'm a little bit of a finance nerd, but would like to know how our debt, or how our debt is structured, if we're just using level debt service, or if we have some sort of structures there. If that can just be a follow-up.
We can get more specific information, but as my understanding, it's a mix.
Anyone else want to geek out about locations or finance structures? I think we're, okay. Councilmember Joe.
I just had another court-related question. I know they've been involved in the conversations. Do they have a preferred alternative? Are they, in other words, okay with moving to the district court building? It is a nice facility, but I still want to take their concerns into account.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Our court staff are very excited at the prospect of moving to the King County District Court. Once they took a tour of that facility, the eyes grew wide like seeing a Christmas tree on Christmas morning. It's just, it's built for those, for that purpose. And that's just not what we're functioning out of today. And so, I think that they're very excited at the prospect of being able to locate in King County District Court. And it provides some efficiencies as well for court patrons.
I suspected that'd be the answer, but certainly, thank you for that information.
Okay. I'm seeing questions slow down, so I think I'm going to take a break for public comment, and then we can get back into feedback. So, there is no one in the room. Clerk, can we ask, is there anyone online?
Yeah, we have two members of the public with us online. So I'm going to monitor for a minute to see if either of them want to raise their hand.
Yep. So, I assume they're not on the phone, but if somebody was, star three, you can press the raise hand icon, you can send the host a chat message. If you want to make comments on this item, we would love to have it.
All right. I'm not seeing either indicated desire to speak.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, then I will go back to the council. As the administration said, we're not looking for any direction, just a general, what are your concerns, comments, thoughts that you want to share? Starting with Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Thank you. Okay, so just some random thoughts. First of all, we have a really good story to tell in terms of how we have managed bonds and repayment of bonds in the past. And I think this is an important part. As we're developing our communications around this project, we really need to include that. Because the AAA bond rating says, this is a responsible organization that's done a really good job of managing the taxpayers' money. So, let's be sure that we tell that story as part of our communications. I'm feeling a lot more comfortable with the amount of information we got tonight, thanks to everybody who worked on that. This is exactly what I was looking for in terms of understanding what response times mean, and the work that's been done in thinking out not only this site, but other sites. So I appreciate the information we received tonight. I'm going to admit that I'm still not totally comfortable with this site. And I still need to understand what improvements we're getting for a major investment of tax dollars. You know, it's just, as other people have said, we're still facing congestion on this street, we're still facing the fact that we're close to lights, and, yeah, it just, I just am not feeling comfortable with it. So what that means is I'm going to continue to ask questions about other sites and other plans, and I, so I'll just be a little mosquito in this project. When we talk about the consequences if we don't do it, I think we have to put those consequences into, what does that mean for our community? Not, you know, what does it mean for the council in terms of, well, maybe we'll go to council manic bonds. I think we have to talk. If we are, if we're out talking to the public and we want them to vote for a bond, they have to know exactly what it's going to mean for them if it doesn't pass. And so I think we've got to start making that list. What does this mean to you in terms of public safety, your own personal interactions with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and so forth? So let's start thinking about that. How will it impact the people in this area? How will it impact the people who are receiving the services from Eastside Fire and Rescue? And then, I want to agree with Councilmember Joe. I want to know what it would cost us if we decide we don't want this site. What more will it cost us? And what are some other properties that we might be looking at? And what would the process be for getting those? And I know that's a really difficult conversation that we might have, but I will reiterate what I said last time. This is a 100-year decision. We're going to be stuck with this site, or whatever site we decide on, we're going to be stuck with it for a long, long time. And I don't want to make a mistake and have people 20, 25 years from now regretting what we've done. So, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Come through next. Don't all jump at once. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you for that information on the response times and the bond history and the paying down of the bonds. I agree with Council Deputy President DeMichele about the story of repaying our debt, and that that's important, as well as our AAA bond rating. Where I still need more information is the cost, especially of any alternatives, including the cost of renovating the existing station for the fire station. So one of the drawbacks that's listed here for renovating that site is that a temporary facility would be required, and that would cost money. But similarly, we are requiring $4 million of tenant improvements for the relocation of the services in this building. And so, I think those are some missing pieces. What would the temporary facility cost? What does that renovation cost? And then we can make the case more clearly for why this is not only a good, a good location for the response times and for the really important benefit that provides to the community, but also for cost effectiveness. So that's really the piece that is missing to me, the cost of any alternatives, including the one that has been identified.
Councilmember Hall.
I think all good questions that have been brought up. I think I feel a bit more confident in this site, where we are right now, for the next fire station. I think especially if our goal is to find a place where the most amount of growth is going to happen in Issaquah, we're going to run into a lot of these problems anywhere in the urban core, or just kind of near the urban core anyways. So, I think that I'm almost sold that this is the right site. I think we're asking the right questions, though, and we should definitely get answers to those. And then I also just want to say, as for kind of the leasing costs and stuff like that, I continue to be worried that we don't have kind of a long-term plan post this fund of money for paying leasing costs. But I also don't see an alternative. It feels to me like we have to jump and lease space and be very creative around what 's the funding going to look like in the future. Or even, we were talking about this earlier, or even just, you know, there are alternatives that we can look at, worst-case scenarios where we're working remotely. I mean, this whole new world is... I mean, this whole new world has opened before us where cities can work completely remotely if they wanted to, at least general government. So it would be good to kind of understand how we should be thinking about that long-term as well.
Okay, we have two abstaining, so I'll just jump in with my comments. I think a lot of the same ideas that you've heard. I appreciate all of the information. I think it gives me more confidence in moving forward. I personally, I personally don't have a problem with this location for a fire station. I do have a problem with knocking down houses for a parking lot. That just really hits me the wrong way, especially when our fire station is currently using secured parking across the way. I also am not necessarily sold on the idea of it having to be secured parking, and could certainly see other ways of utilizing that space that has community benefit. I'm going to throw out two really weird ideas here, but looking at our community center lawn or the park across the street, and somehow utilizing those spaces. The problem I have with this location for a fire station is it just feels like it's shoved in to a space because we own it. And I think when we're thinking about something for a 50- or 100-year idea, and we're thinking about what are the best things for traffic and community use, and just all of these things, I just want to make sure we're making the right decision and not just the decision that might kind of fit the land that we have. I really appreciate us as a community. I mean, I don't think the community members really understand how, how much we have reused our buildings, noting that we are sitting in a former fire station that has not been rehabbed in quite a while, and also use it for our court. So I think that's an important portion to tell. I just want to make sure that if we're going to make a decision for a long-term property use, that we're really taking into account all possible options. Because we do have other properties around the area that I'd also want to make sure that we've evaluated all of our other facilities that maybe we're underutilizing and such. Okay. So, again, turning back, any other commentary, things that you want to know before these next tours or meetings? Obviously, you can always email in other questions. Yep, Councilmember Hunt?
So when you, in your remarks just now, when you were mentioning the area with the parking lot, I was trying to look, but that is currently city-owned and used for the human services, is that right? So that it is, I just wanted to clarify, it's not currently, it's a house, but it's not currently used for housing?
Yes, yes, you're absolutely right. It is a house that is not used for housing.
And is, and is also owned by the city?
Yes.
Yes, not somebody's house. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Correct. You're very good clarification. We are not looking to take anyone's home or anything. For me, it's just the visual of putting up another parking lot and putting it on an area that had a facility on it, and also is right next to a bunch of parking and a beautiful trail, so. So I guess I will go to the administration. You guys have everything you need?
We do. Thank you, Council.
Fantastic. Thanks, everyone. So, looking back at our agenda, we have one more item on our agenda, which is COM 0028, the 2023 year-end and first quarter 2024 financial report, presented by Susie Munsell, Budget Manager. But I see Andrea Snyder still standing up there.
Yes, not rid of me just yet. As Susie is preparing to share her presentation, I just wanted to give a few remarks in advance. This is the first end-of-year report we have for our new biennium budget. And so we're done with year one of our two-year budget, and we're moving into year two. And it changes how we think about our budget a little bit. And we want to, of course, ensure we're managing the funds appropriately, and it's a little different with the two-year budget. And so as we move into this report that Susie's preparing to give, if you need additional information about the year-end or the first quarter, definitely let us know. We'll perfect these types of reports over time with the biennium budget. I also just want to provide a high-level summary of the information that Susie is about to share. In summary, we're ending the year really well. Our forecasts for revenue have been fairly accurate, with a few small exceptions. Our expenditures also appear to be 97% of what we had forecasted. So overall, big picture, 2023 was pretty much as we had expected it to be. That's good news. As we look into 2024, the first quarter revenues are down from our budget forecast, especially in construction sales tax. We're going to keep a close eye on this, of course. And while your finance staff are always very concerned and cautious when it comes to revenues, we're not sending any alarm bells just yet. So we, we, we're going to keep an eye on it, but no, no terrible sky is falling bad news today. So, as, that's the general overview of Susie's presentation. I'd like to invite her up so she can give you the details and specifics.
I'm also short. Okay, thank you. So, as Andrea mentioned, we are here to give the overview of the 2023 year-end financial review, as well as a sneak peek of the first quarter of 2024. So the direction or feedback requested from council is really any thoughts, concerns that you have at this point in time. We will be back many times before the end of the year for the various stages of the '25-'26 budget. But for where we currently are, if we're realizing now that these look like books. So, 2023 and 2024, we are currently in the middle of our first biennial budget through March, which is the actuals that we have through Q1. That represents about 63% of the full biennium. And our proposed '25-'26 budget is coming this summer, will be transmitted in September. So diving into our year-end summary, the highest of high-level summaries, we have focusing on the general fund. I should note, this presentation primarily focuses on the general fund with a little bit of REIT thrown in. But one of the attachments to the packet was the updated all-city funds for where we ended 2023. So as a reminder, the last forecast that we provided to the council was in November of last year. That looked at where we believed at that point in time we would end '23, as well as we did take a peek at 2024. So if we compare where we ended '23 with that forecast, we came in, in terms of total ending fund balance, very close. That we had forecast $23 million, and we brought in, or excuse me, and we ended '23 total ending fund balance at 23.6, so just a difference of about $600,000. So we did want to highlight, though, as the primary benchmark that we use for balancing the general fund is that undesignated ending fund balance as a percent of expenditures. So in 20, or in our forecast last year, we believed we would end the year at about 15%. We really ended it at 20%, and the primary reason for that is that we refined that designated fund balance number. So if you compare the forecast and the actual, that's where the flip was. We had over-included ARPA expenditures in designated in the forecast. So diving a little bit deeper, if we look at high-level revenue categories, these are the same categories that we show in the monthly report on the city website. For the most part, revenues came in, as Andrea mentioned, pretty close to where we had forecasted, with a few exceptions. And this is a good point to highlight the challenge, our first real challenge. I think we've discovered in our first time in our second year of a biennium, which is, we adopted a budget for two years. And we want to be able to monitor and spend across the two years, and collect across the two years. So one of the things we're going to see in the '23 actuals is, especially on the revenue side, some of the revenues that we anticipated in '23 may still come in '24. A lot of the yellow highlighted departments here are heavily dependent on timing. So that's the, that's the primary reason that community planning and development, as well as the municipal court, came in a little under budget. It's, or brought in a little bit less than forecasted, primarily as we are expecting that to come in in '24. Business and occupation tax and utility tax were both slightly under forecast as well. The business and occupation tax, we only collect quarterly, and we saw a very large reduction in the second quarter of last year, very large. We were not at the point where we were comfortable enough with those numbers to dramatically reduce the forecast. So I think what we ended up seeing was, if we had reduced it, it would have been too far. So we still came in within about $400,000 to $500,000 on total BNO. Utility tax, similar story. There was, there was complexity to how we received those revenues over time, and I am happy to go into the detail on that if you would like. But in the interest of time, I'm going to keep going. And to offset some of these revenue decreases in terms of what was forecasted, we did see an increase for Parks and Community Services, primarily in the community center. Miscellaneous was the last revenue piece we wanted to flag here. That under-received amount was from a bit over forecasting investment interest, which was certainly higher in '23 than we've seen in prior years, but not quite as high as we had forecasted. On the expenditure side, it is the flip side of what we saw in the revenue piece. So those same three departments that we talked about for timing on the revenue side, those often pass through to the expenditure side. So while we saw less revenue for CPD, the court, and human services, we are, that passes through to fewer expenditures. So once that timing and we receive the revenue kicks in, the expenditure should follow suit. And unlike the revenue side, we don't forecast down to the category level. We do it for the full fund. So at, as of November of last year, we forecasted about $75.4 million in expenditures. We came in at $72.9, which was about 97% of the forecast. That was the 2023 piece, but I see a question.
Indeed. Councilmember Hall?
Just a quick one. But that is, we're anticipating that changing, right? In terms of forecasting expenditures by line, or is that something we're working on into the future?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. What we've talked about for this coming year is, while we don't believe we have capacity to look at every expenditure line, what we would like to focus on is those highly variable ones. So professional services, personnel, we want to make sure we do a deep dive into those going into this year, because I think that can really help refine that expenditure forecast. Thank you for asking that. Great. Shifting to 2024. So this is showing revenue through March of this year. This is a newly, as Andrea mentioned, this is a slightly different view of this report than we've shown in the past. This is how we are monitoring this year across both years, across '23 and '24. So we've got our total budget for the two years, the '23 actual, now that the year is complete, and then we will be adding in '24 as we go to monitor the total. So I should note, this is at 55% at the moment, even though we are through about 63% of the year. We only have January and February for sales tax and BNO, and those are pretty big-ticket items. So we wanted to take a brief look at why sales, or at what's happening with sales tax. As Andrea mentioned as well, construction is, continues to be down. So looking at the sales tax that we've received from really the three largest categories, we see retail is ticking back up a bit so far this year and in '23. But construction, once again, continues to be very low. And that is observed throughout the county as well. So the, the piece I would add to that is, construction, just through February of the actuals that we have, is down 23% from through February of last year. Looking at the expenditure side, the, since we're at about 63, I'm going to round up, percent of the year, year-to-date, we've spent 62% of the total budget, so we are, at this point, very much on track. Quick update on REIT. So as you may remember from last year, we very much reduced the REIT forecast. We were seeing very low numbers last year, both in transactions and in value. This year, we have seen improvement, massive improvement, but cautiously, cautiously optimistic. So our last forecast for 2023, we had that we would land at about $3 million, and we ended at 3.2. Looking into 2024, the last forecast had us at basically where we ended 2023, based on actuals through March, throwing in a new term, projection, which is not quite a forecast, of about $5.3 million. And I should note, we typically don't forecast large transactions, as they are highly variable. But we've already received $900,000 from those large transactions this year, so that's been making a big difference.
And that's mostly from one transaction. Our dear friends at Costco, that is a very large.
So looking at just where, how this compares to prior years in large transactions and regular activity, this really helps highlight that 2024 piece of how we're expecting that to grow. Finally, where we go from here? So as we've mentioned a few times tonight, we will continue to monitor all of this very closely through the end of the year and beyond. So the full general fund forecast update will come, as it does each year, in August, ahead of '25-'26 budget development. And I wanted to give the heads up, too, that the monthly reports that we post on the city website are up to date through March. Those are posted, and following tonight, this report will also get posted. And then I just bring, come back to the feedback, that we are open to any thoughts, concerns that you may have at this point in time. I should also ask if there are questions.
Yeah, I guess that's a good point. We'll start with questions. Any questions coming through? Quickly moving off questions. Take a moment to see if we have any public comment on that. Again, no one in the room, unless Chief Lane, you want to be a public commenter on this topic, but no pressure on that. Okay, fantastic. Yeah, fantastic. And for anyone online that wants to send the chat, send the host a chat message or raise their virtual hand, not seeing any?
No one's indicating a desire to speak.
Okay, well, then I'll go on to feedback. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you for this. I really appreciate it. This is something I've wanted for a long, long time, and it's very succinct, and it's very understandable, and it just makes my day to see it. And then my only real comment, other than thank you, is the REIT number's kind of blown my mind. And primarily, I mean, the $900,000, we understand that. But I would just think, given, kind of just day-to-day, real estate transactions would be depressed, not thriving. So that just, that one surprised me, and I think is worth keeping an eye on, because as you tell as you tell us every time, REIT is unpredictable and it, and it is surprising us yet again. But I, I think the numbers makes, makes sense. Sales tax doesn't surprise me one little bit, that we see retail ticking up and construction cratering. Really gratified to see accommodations up-ticking. That is encouraging and I think is reflective of large employers here in, in our city, as well as tourism. And then, you know, the, the revenue and expenses for through March seem in line with where we'd expect them to be. And since this is our first biennial budget, that's kind of encouraging. And then finally, you know, budgets are always wrong. We know that, but they're, they're good barometers and they're good things to measure against and yeah, so this, this is great. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Two quick questions and then brief comments. You mentioned that there is a difference between forecast and projection, so I wondered if you could explain that difference?
Sure. I, I mainly use that term because I wanted to keep forecast as true moments where we come to the council with a full, an update. We monitor throughout the course of the year and, you know, after each month that we receive sales tax and REIT as an example, we update our internal forecast, but month to month, it is, it gets a little tricky to pin down. So I just wanted to note the difference that we were not suggesting an updated forecast yet on REIT, but so far, for what we, what we've seen through March, it's looking, it's looking better.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then also, on construction, I believe you said that this is something, this decline is something that's being seen across the region. Is our percentage decline in line with what's being seen across the region? And then are there any? I would then think that other cities are also trying to predict what's the, when is it going to tick back up? What's going to be the future of this construction revenue? And so I'm wondering if you have any, any insights from other cities that are also trying to do projections and trying to understand this trend?
Absolutely. So last week, the Puget Sound Financial Officers Association gave, organized a great presentation from the King County Office of Economic Forecasting, I want to say is the last word. And it looked at national trends, local trends, looking at a ton of factors. And when they were looking at the housing market, in the region, it was ticking up. They don't expect it necessarily to hold out long-term, but they caveated it very heavily of we are not sure at all. Similarly, with construction sales tax, that is, the reduction that we've seen is very much consistent with the rest of the region. It's right around in line of what the region is seeing.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then for my, for my comments. Firstly, the undesignated ending fund balance as percent of expenditure, it was forecast to be 15 and it is actually going to be 20%. So that is much closer to what was forecast in, in previous budgets that I've been a part of. And that does indicate that we are doing a, a good job forecasting what those expenditures are going to be, but also spending money on projects and on services that the community needs, that we've budgeted for, that we expected to be able to do in that timeframe. So I just wanted to appreciate that, because we have seen that number be much higher before and that's been a point of some frustration with the council, that we've expected to have money spent on projects that are needed that wasn't able to be spent. So firstly, wanted to thank you for that and that's a really great sign. And then also, many of the forecasts are very close to the, the actuals. Again, really helpful to see that and I think is, gives us faith in the numbers that we're using to budget. So that's also really great to see and overall, appreciate the information about the trends and the different mechanisms that we're seeing driving these trends and I think that will help us make for a better budget process. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll throw mine in at the end then. Lots of the similar appreciation for the information, for the accuracy of the forecasts, for how the administration has handled our previous feedback and as Councilmember Hunt said, done a good job of adjusting those. We can see that plainly here. I did call out and have a little bit of concern about the revenue coming in from community planning and development. Revenue or? Been, yeah, I think it was revenue. Yeah, revenue in this year? Yeah, for first quarter was only at 51% and then the previous in 2023 was also lower. So I would just ask that we're paying attention to that, if we need to make any adjustments to our forecasts to recognize the changing nature of whether people are building and, you know, there's definitely that tie between revenue that we get through CPD and revenue that we get through construction sales tax. And so if we're seeing both of those decreasing, recognizing that they kind of emphasize each other. And then when we are looking at revenues, it is nice to see the strong Parks and Community Services for 2023. I assume with the revenue for first quarter 2024, that doesn't include any of the summer camps or any of that area. Most of those haven't been prepaid. So if we're looking at 69% right now for, received for 2023 and 2024, that could even be continued higher. Yeah, I'm sure some people have already paid all of that, but yeah, yeah. But recognizing all of that, I know we have added to the services there and we have also kind of recognized that any additional expenditures that we make in the community center area and recreation programs, we tend to get back in revenue. So I'd like to just keep paying attention to that as we have increased our expenditures there, making sure that we're seeing the revenue and it seems like we are, and then utilizing that information as we go into this next budget. It could be a good cycle of giving back to our community with relatively cheap classes that give them needs that they're looking for, so that they don't have to travel outside of the community to do those things. So I think seeing this data does suggest a lot of those things are happening and I'll be looking forward to it. But generally, just really pleased with what the data says about what the administration has been doing, what the, how the information is presented to us, the transparency and the story it tells about, how good we do with our money. So looking around, anything else, any other feedback? Does the administration have what they need?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, looking at that, I think we are coming to a close. We've got Good of the Order. Anyone have any comments to throw out here for Good of the Order? Seeing closed laptops. Okay, I think we are good.
Wait, I have one.
Oh, 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 last minute, always.
Well, I was reaching for my bag, because I have in my bag the Eastside Fire and Rescue 2023 annual report. So I will pass it up and down if anyone wants to take a look and I'll be sure to pass it around at the next general meeting when we have everyone here as well. Yes, and electronic versions will be sent out as well.
We're very green, City of Minnesota.
Yeah, there you go. It was an electronic choice to be green there. Okay, so I will take this moment to list us as adjourned at 8:11 PM. Thank you, everyone.